2017 to order, if everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, roll call.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Mercado.
Here.
Councilmember Reif.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andrusik.
Here.
And Mayor Ciara.
Here, thank you very much. Do we have any reordering of the agenda?
No ma'am.
Okay, moving on to public comments. Let's see, I have one person in the audience, Ms. Barb Connect, if you'd like to step up, please.
Yes, so I'm going to hand out my visual aids, as I often do, to make my point. So if you'll just take one at each pile, please. And we'll start the clock.
Yeah, you're okay.
What?
You're okay.
So. Good evening, distinguished council members and new council members and Mayor Ciara. My name's Barbara Connect and I am a resident of Beulahton and I have been up here a lot in the last year, bringing points to your attention. And so this all began with, if you look on the Ordinance number seventeen point dash oh two, is the reading of the new ordinance that was voted on and apparently caused quite an uproar. If you look at the last page, you will see what prompted the, and it's a color photo, of what brought this to many people, at least in my neighborhood's attention, was that in the ordinance as it stood, after it was changed on the eighth of February 2008, if I'm correct, this is now a legal item that is allowed as the ordinance was written before and then it got changed. And by the way, it was a 401 vote to change the ordinance to what is now everybody screaming about. It was changed to preserve our quality of life, our, the appeal of our town, and it's not that we need to ignore the rights of the homeowners, if indeed we are concerned about, it is my property and I can do what I want with it. If you look at the nuisance ordinance, it is one of our zoning laws, that we've got a code enforcement officer that will go out and tell you to clean up your yard if it's bad, and that is one of our zoning laws, but yet you can put a trailer in your front yard. We've got kind of a mixed message there, that no, you can't have weeds, but you can put a trailer in your yard, literally. And so my point is that no, we don't live in the county that does not say you cannot care about your neighbors. And in the top part of that public nuisance article, it does say that we are responsible to not only the health and safety of our neighborhoods, but the aesthetics. So it is not a free-for-all, and that is why we have you, because when you make a decision, whether we like it or not, we need to respect it. If we had no ordinances and no rules, we would have chaos. That is the reason we have police and fire and everything else. I also looked at the number of homes in Beulahton, and there's anywhere between seventeen and eighteen hundred homes. So I bumped up the trailer RV issue, and when we originally did the count, it was like sixty-seven. So I bumped it up to eighty-five, because in my neighborhood alone, there's five new legal.
Recreational vehicles.
In the neighborhood. And so that leaves sixteen hundred and fifteen households that do not have something in their front yard. And so if you are taking care and doing what I hope you do, and you know that is right, but you're not going to leave the sixteen hundred and fifteen of us in the dark and out in the cold, because there are some people that are stomping their feet because they have bought a recreational vehicle and want to put it literally in their yard. So I am hoping with that kind of information that I have presented to you, that you will do the right thing in two weeks. This gives you something to look at, actually read the zoning and understand where a few of us are coming from. We are the more silent majority of people that do respect our neighborhood and want to keep our neighborhoods looking right. And the other point is that RVs and trailers and utility trailers do bring the price of your home down. It is proven. So if I wanted to sell my house, you cannot tell me that that, my neighbor's trailer in their yard would not affect the sale of my house. So then that goes back to it's, you're affecting me. So thank you for, again, and I'll just keep trying. Thank you, I hope you do the right thing.
Thank you very much, and Barbara, I'm really sorry that your vehicle was egged the day after the ordinance passed.
And by the way, after the vote, that 401 vote to change, the next night, mine was the only car, because I drive an orange truck, that was egged. No one else in my neighborhood got egged, my husband's car didn't get egged, but mine did. So that is the quality of people that we are dealing with. So I can't say for sure, but I just think that it's very consequential that that happens. So, that again.
I'm very sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else with public comments? Then I close down public comments, bringing our agenda back to the consent calendar. We have three items, minutes of June twenty-second, 2017, regular city council meeting, claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year 2016-17, and designation of voting delegate and alternate for the 2017 League of California Cities Annual Conference Business Meeting. Gentlemen?
I just have one question. Have we already designated who we're going to have as voting delegate, that are you and Ed?
Usually the mayor and vice mayor.
Okay, perfect.
If you want to change that?
No, no ma'am.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Move for approval of the consent items one through three as submitted.
Second.
Linda?
Okay, Vice Mayor Andrusik.
Aye.
And Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Mercado.
Aye, except for, I abstained from number one, because I was not part of the council at that time.
Part of the audience.
Councilmember Reif.
Aye.
And Mayor Ciara.
Aye, thank you. Any public hearings?
No ma'am.
Councilmember comments items, I'll start with Councilmember Reif, anything?
No ma'am.
Vice Mayor Andrusik?
Council items.
Or comments?
You know, it's the, it's a very hot time of the year. I think, you know, we run across the many families are supporting their children's efforts at FFA, what do you find, FFA? And a lot of show, you know, they're showing their animals that they've raised at the fair, and it's really been a, an emotional time for families, and every year they go through this, and it's, we're fortunate to have a county that pulls together a very large organization that participates, and I think a lot of character building is going on with all the families that are involved. And I think if you get a chance to go up and witness it, it's a great thing.
Thank you. Councilmember Mercado, anything from you?
Not at that time.
Alrighty.
Thank you for.
Nice to have you here.
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Ma'am, I just have one question for Mark. Anything on the crosswalk at Damasa? Or is that, we're just going to defer that, maybe that should be over to Rose?
We're still look, we're still looking at that, we haven't got the information yet.
That's correct. Yeah, that's still, we haven't gotten as much information to put together on that yet, but that's on our list of items to do.
But that doesn't have to go forward all the way to our plans, we can do this in advance, if you guys just go take a look at it and go.
Yes.
I mean, it's our road.
Yeah, we, no, we're, it's not tied to the specific plan, it's, we're doing the research and we'll bring it back to council when we get the information.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Alrighty, and I just have two items. First of all, barbecue Bonanza is the twenty-ninth, and we invite everybody, every resident in Beulahton to come on down. We've got bands and booths and good food, and bring a dessert to share with your neighbors. And the second item is, we have a vacancy, two vacancies on our planning commission. Tuesday is the last day to submit an application to become a commissioner, and please, become a part of the community and turn in an application.
Who's applying?
Pardon?
Has anybody applied?
One person.
Yes, one person, and one who is going to apply.
Yeah.
Do we know a name? Do we have a name?
Marcelo's applied, and Patty Hamel, who's applied previously for the commission, is interested again.
So neither Efrem or the, or the other?
No, I was hoping that the applicants for council.
And we have contacted Shannon to see if she was interested, so we've reiterated with her what the deadline is.
Yeah, so hopefully anybody listening, anybody who's interested in becoming a more active member of the community, Tuesday's the deadline for applications, and we sure could use your help on our planning commission. Moving on to written communications?
No ma'am.
Committee reports. Vice Mayor Andrusik?
Madam Mayor, I attended a meeting on June twenty-ninth for the Indian Gaming Commission Distribution of Funds. It's, there's a lot less money available these days, but there was one applicant for the money that was available, and it was the solving city council. They, the Chumash had agreed to buy, at their twelve-story hotel, they agreed to buy a lift ladder, I'm not sure how large, how far up it'll go, but I think it's four, maybe fourth floor, pretty good, pretty good sized ladder, and then they realized they didn't have a building to put it in, so they, they applied for a $69,000 grant to, and they were awarded that to park the vehicle when it, whenever it does arrive. It hasn't arrived yet. However, I pray.
Who gave them the grant?
The Indian Gaming, they contribute to community.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Programs, and the governor, they has to go through Sacramento and then come back down, and everyone applies. We, that's how we bought our first motorcycle for, when, I think, when, I've said it. And the, then, it wasn't so much a committee report, but there was a meeting of the, for mayors and council members, for the executive committee meeting in June, June twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, since our last meeting, to up in Monterey, discussing league, league issues, and pretty well represented, I think we had about a hundred and eighty cities were represented there. And it was, it was a good roundtable, just more roundtable discussion. And then, of course, we'll be going September to the state league. That's all I have.
Alrighty. Any other committee reports? Okay.
I just have one question. Did I take over, go ahead, I didn't even have to answer the question.
Yes, he's on the library committee, and.
Economic development.
That is correct.
Okay.
And you're on, and the, Councilmember Mercado will be on the joint use committee, I believe.
Dave is on the, Dave is on the, what type of a comment you did?
Joint use.
So you are the JPIA alternate and joint use committee, and you are on the library and economic.
Yes.
JPIA.
I have no idea.
No, I'm not JPIA.
Alrighty. Moving on to business items, I have a receive and file private project agreed upon procedure findings. I will turn it over to Finance Director Zamora, but I was really hoping that our.
They're planning to be here, we're hoping that they're just running a little late, because they're coming from San Luis.
Okay. Chanel, go ahead.
Madam Mayor and City Council, back in March, City Council requested that a review of revenue and expenditure reports related to private projects be done. So we went out for RFP, and we chose Glenn Burdette to do our audit. Earlier in June, they came into our office and they discussed the procedures and the changes we have done to private projects. And with that, they decided what was the best way to audit the private projects expenditure reports and revenue. And attached is the findings report that the auditors presented. Tim Dosse, our auditor, was supposed to be here this evening to review the report with you and answer any questions, but since he's not here yet, I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I've got a few of them, but Foster, anybody else? On page sixty-one, it says that ten developers owe the city a total of $11,009 between, projects conducted between 2004 and 2012. I know you're new and you weren't in finance 2004 to 12, but what are we going to do, what are we doing about this?
I'm actually looking into that, because what happened prior to 2013, every project had its own revenue and expenditure report. So it wasn't until June thirtieth of 2013, it was all converted into a liability account. So somehow, within that conversion period, those were missed. And I have gone back, and some of them, we actually have paid the developer. So I'm going to just keep doing that, going back to every single project of those, I believe it was ten or thirteen.
But it said that three developers we owe money to, and ten of them owe money to us, but I mean, we're going back to 2004 through 12, I mean, that's quite a while ago. So I'm just wondering, how do you go back and collect money from thirteen years ago?
I think some part of it is such as the Meritage Project, correct?
Yes, correct, that's one of them.
So they're still active projects on the books, so we've been sending letters to them to get the funds. So we are, we are following through to get that revenue.
Thank you. Okay, and the other ones were questions for the auditor.
Let me, do you have his cellphone number?
No, it's just his business phone number and email.
Okay.
Yeah, it's strange, because right before I got five, he said he was on his way.
Yeah, I can try their.
Could be another fire.
Please, Councilmember King.
So the, so just the ten owes us $11,000.
Yes.
That's the total between, between all ten?
Yes.
Not including anything that's going on now?
No, no, it's all inactive projects or old projects prior to 2013.
We do have the one since then.
Right.
That we're.
Yeah, that we're dealing with, the Crossroads Project.
Any other questions?
I'm going to try their office number, and just see if I can.
I think for discussion, what I was going to ask, if they were here, because this is an area that they're experienced in, how would they handle this situation going forward, so we're not looking?
I think we can answer.
Back nine years, thirteen years.
I think Chanel can answer that question.
Okay.
Could you rephrase that question, please?
Well, having this happen.
It's your microphone.
Thank you. Having had this happen over, since, I don't know, I think there's only one was in 2004, but that was the benchmark we were given from 2000. What recommendations or what steps would we take? It just seems like there would be an account that would pop up, or some, someplace you would go to see, are we all collected, yes or no? And if not, who owes us money?
At this point, our new Tyler module will help us do that, because now we can track every single project individually. So everything that comes in and deposits that come in and expenditures are all recorded within that project. But prior to Tyler, we had no way of knowing, because we only had the liability account and there was no project associated. So staff had to go back to each individual transaction and code it to it, and then put it in a counter receivable.
I remember how that, I mean, they used to get a bill, and then you had to, it came, when it came through your office, I think it went through Public Works first, or whoever was in charge of the labor side of it, and they would assess which account it was, and if that were mistakenly done, it goes off into the.
And since Tyler's been installed, that's, that's not an issue anymore, because it's by project, so we're accounting for it. So it's just the pre-Tyler, the pre-Fundware software that we had that had the issues with it. So going forward, there won't be that issue. And I'm going to step out real quick and.
And do, are we, was this a one-time use of these folks, or could we possibly be using them again for, since they've done the research?
Council can certainly ask them.
All of the, all of the work?
Yes, council can ask for them to continue their work.
Okay, did you find them to be effective? I mean, you're, you're as new as they are, so.
Yeah, they were.
You're all speaking the same language.
Yes, they were very effective. They asked us the right questions, and we were able to provide them the information that they needed. He did do a really good job of tracking back the older accounts, and he also helped us find some discrepancies as well. So since he came, we did update our Tyler module, and now it's a little bit more up to date.
Okay.
But thanks to this, we were able to have the accurate numbers. And another note that I plan to do for transparency purposes is give council a monthly project balance report. That way you guys know what the balance for every developer is, and you'll know who owes money or who we owe money to.
Okay. Well, that's good. And now, does that affect, is this capital improvements also that Rose would be dealing with? I mean, where we, we know where we're, where we're at budget-wise versus what, what we've got in the pipeline for bidding or under construction?
Right, all the projects have accounts through the Tyler system, so at any given point, you can pull up the project and account number.
It's the clearinghouse, there's no side vendors anywhere.
Right, so everything can, is readily tracked and reportable through this Tyler system now. So almost any report you can imagine, the finance department would be able to either create a report or readily print one out.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I guess, Art, anything?
No.
Okay, I, you know, mine, mine are all like, two private projects were chosen from the older ones, the Beulahton Oak Senior Care and the Verizon TPM project. I'm curious why he chose them. I was, wanted to ask them about the question we had from one of our residents about double billings. I wanted to ask about some of the discrepancies, I, you know.
They said they were going to be here, maybe we can take a five-minute recess.
Well, either that, do you want to move on to city manager's report, and just leave this one open? We have Erica Vega on the line from our legal team. Erica, can I just put this agenda item on hold, move on and come back to it?
Yes, absolutely, you can continue it to later on the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, Mark, is that okay?
No, that's fine.
And then we can take a little break, if they're still not here?
Yeah, and Chanel will email them right now to see where, where they're at.
Thank you.
No, we, they were supposed to be here, we apologize for that.
I, thank you.
All right, we are, there's a notice of intent for a FEMA grant that we're going to apply for our city hall generators, so I'm working with county OEM on, on that. So it's about a hundred grand, and we have to pay twenty-five of it, which we already budgeted, so we can get seventy-five, hopefully through the grant.
Is it another generator or?
The city hall generator, which is just, doesn't cover anything, basically. So we have one.
But they're over there for the planning department.
Yeah, so we have that, but now, if we have this, we can get city hall done. In August, I'm going to bring two items to council for discussion, a discussion of bonds, and what the pros and cons of using bonds to finance items are, and that was a council request. And we have cost estimates for the industrial way lighting, as far as the decorative versus the standard and the maintenance costs, so we'll have that bringing forward as well. Probably later in the fall, I'll set an item for goals, as requested by the council, so I have not forgotten that, so we will definitely be working on, on getting that before the council. Our webpage is going to be updated shortly, and we'll give you an email when it's active, but it's more user-friendly and easier to navigate. As I mentioned earlier, there's possibility of sundowner winds tomorrow, so it could whip up the Whittier Fire, and ten of us will be down in Santa Barbara, so just keep your fingers crossed that the sundowners don't come up and go down to the, to the ocean.
They'll be at the high school singing kumbaya together, huh?
Uh-huh. And avenue flag specific plan, we're releasing the environmental document next week, and the second meeting in August is when the planning commission will look at it, make recommendations to the council, and hopefully second meeting in September will be before the council for action.
Super.
Madam Mayor, I have a, while we're perhaps waiting for them. This would be a future agenda, back to future agenda item, I was going to kind of mention it when we were discussing the financial report that we, we have before us, but I would like to see if we, I don't know if there is a clearing place at city, of all of the organizations that we give money to, that we have a copy, a current copy of their bylaws. We've had some, some issues with, people have asked me, where do we go to get, I said, you should just go to the, the organization. Some of the organizations are saying, well, it's a member-only, or, you know, it's, why do you want them? And I think if.
It's all nonprofit, they should, bylaws are required.
So I, just, you know, some, the way things kind of go through the.
I guess not necessarily an item, but just ask them and then provide the council copies of their bylaws and have those available.
That's, that's what I was.
For nonprofits that we do.
So if any of us have, we don't have to have a, wait till we have an organization meeting for it, we can, we could, there's a clearing place for it, perhaps it's on council, council docket somewhere.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
And see, we've, we've waited long enough that.
Perfect.
I apologize.
It took me an hour just to get to the Como traffic.
Well, we had other items, we managed to stretch it out, so I think.
Before I go back to agenda item four, I did want to thank you, Mark, your project list that you gave us, I really liked the new format. It was really easy to read, and it very much appreciated, thank you.
And thank Irma Tucker and Andrea O'Keefe for that, they're the ones who looked at it and with a fresh set of eyes and put it together, so it's a little easier to use.
It's a very nice format, much easier to understand.
I will pass that on to them, thank you.
Thank you. All right, then we move back to business item number four, receive and file private project agreed upon procedure findings. Mr., you're Mr. Burdette?
Tim Dosse.
Tim Dosse, Mr. Dosse.
I work for Glenn Burdette.
Well, I appreciate you coming tonight. We've, we've asked what questions we could from staff, and just had a couple left that wanted to go over with you.
Sure.
We appreciate the work you put into this, and, and I, I had a couple questions, did anybody else have any other questions?
I will, I will.
Okay, hold on. My, my first one was the, it said that two private projects were chosen from the older files, the Beulahton Oak Senior Care and the Verizon TPM project. I was just curious how you chose the projects, was it just a random, you had a list of them, and you said, well, let's do this one and this one, or was there anything specific that?
Typically, we would do a random-type selection, but in this case, I tried to look for, we didn't do a random selection, we did more of a targeted selection, so we looked for projects that had enough of a population of revenues, expenditures, deposits, something that we could have, yeah, and get our hands on. And with those, we were able to, I believe those were going to be able to tie back everything that were in those projects, and that gave us a really good feel for, did everything come over properly, did it not?
And how our, how our system worked, and.
Yeah.
Okay. One of my questions, I, we've got a resident who suggested that there are double billings going on. Did you see anything that looked like it could, that looked suspiciously like a double billing, or?
I did not see anything that looked like a double billing. I mean, our procedures were not specifically to look for that, but we were looking at revenues, expenses, transactions within specific projects, to make sure that they were classified within that project properly, was the, was the project complete, so to speak, from the standpoint, is it including everything it should include? Does it tie back to supporting documentation? But I did not see anything that would suggest double billings in what we looked at.
Thank you very much. I know you've done audits for other cities before, I'm curious, you know, we have a system here where our city engineering firm, MNS, or Tetra Tech, will go out and do an inspection, and then bill the city, the city pays the engineering firm, and then we bill or we take money out of the account of the developer. Is that? Is that fairly common?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say so. As a matter of fact, there was another city that came across our desk recently asking for a proposal on something and they also used the Tyler system and had a very similar process.
Thank you very much. And then my last question is that you did find discrepancies and, and stated that you didn't, you know, get to go through all the other files and there could be discrepancies there too, is.
Well, I'm not sure I follow you on that one.
I am trying to figure out where, let's see, on page 64 with recommendations, you had three recommendations.
Oh, yes, yes.
And I thought I saw something in there. I don't see it now. Oh, on the last page, "We were not engaged to and did not conduct the examination, the objective of which would be the expression of an opinion on the accounting records of the city. Accordingly, we do not express such an opinion. Had we performed additional procedures, other matters might have come to our attention that would have been reported to you."
That's sort of boilerplate.
Is it?
Agreed upon procedures letter. It's not specifically pointing to anything in specific that was done.
We didn't pay them for a forensic analysis or whatever.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Council member Rice?
Probably more questions. If, if we can get back to the two, so the genesis of all this is based off of very specific complaints from, from specific residents. Let's not beat around the side bush, right? So in that regard, may I ask, this is probably half a question for staff and half a question for.
Mr. Dosa.
Dorsa.
Dosa.
Dosa?
Dosa.
Dosa, all right, I apologize. I have a, my name's, my last name's hard to pronounce, excuse me. Why we wouldn't pick one of the projects that said resident had been adamantly, repetitively commenting upon over the span of months and months and months and we picked different projects? Because now I feel that we have just defeated said.
I believe the Flying Flags project was studied.
That is correct.
Oh, it was?
On page, one of the 10.
Yes, there was five, six private projects, including Flying Flags.
Where's?
That's on page 63.
Did I miss that? I may have missed it, hold on. Oh, these, okay. Oh, and what were the two that, what was?
Those are the two prior to 2013, is that correct?
From the 2004, 2012.
Oh, from the different thing, oh, okay. All right. Got it. Okay, cool. Retracted. I'll have more questions.
Okay.
No more questions? Vice Mayor Andrejic, anything from you?
Mr. Dosa, how, how often do you deal with a city decides 5,000 or less? Cities, I guess we would be considered less than 10,000 rather than, less than 5,000, just about every city's right around 5, but quite a few are less than 10. Do you find this to be problematic with accounting and cities, cities reaching out to develop, things getting lost in the shop? I guess there's no other way to put it than it's just some things get overlooked. And I guess Tyler is supposed to, are you, are you experts on Tyler or are you?
I would not say we're experts on Tyler, but we, we've got a good understanding of the.
You find it to be.
Yeah, so we, we typically do audits of cities, so I don't know, we proposed on yours.
Oh, you do?
So we've done the City of San Luis Obispo and the City of Longoke and Guadalupe Bay and a number of others, so some of the larger cities. So I wouldn't say that it's, that it's a typical issue. I think the genesis of what we saw here, like probably, you know, to your point, councilman, why, why did we do this in the first place largely had to do with just the conversion from one system to another? And that we do see all the time being problematic. That's a difficult thing to do. And this one in particular was done well, it just took extra time to resolve all the variances that happened when things were brought over. And working with Chanel and working with Carolyn when she was here, I did get a good feel for they're on top of it, they're working through it, it's just taken this much time to sort of figure out where everything belongs. And so some of the items that we came across that are, that are in the report, we took that extra step to make sure, okay, let me see it in Tyler now that it's fixed. Let me see that it's in the right place, let me see that it's the proper balance. And we were able to follow that all the way through. So I, I think the Tyler system, to your, to your earlier question, is head and shoulders above what you had before. The ability to be able to have that project module and track everything by project in a separate module is imperative.
When it was presented to us by, I think, two finance directors ago, we, we were, we were told how great it is and you, you certify that also.
Yeah.
You concur. And I, I just, maybe it's, I, I don't think any of us would, would feel good if we thought something just got disappeared and we don't know where it went. And that was, that was kind of the nexus of the accusations that we've been each privy to, one-on-one. And I wanted to just, we need to feel a sense of, I think that's why we've all put our heads together to say, let's, let's make sure we all understand it and appreciate your depth, your, I found your report all encompassing, but we don't know if you gave us everything. You're always, you give reports to, to other cities. Are we right in the middle of the, the problem situations that you run into or, to my, to my knowledge, this is the first time we've ever asked someone to check the, the work that we've been doing and it is.
Yeah, it's an interesting one because we don't do, I'm just thinking back here, we don't do a lot of agreed upon procedure work because we're also the auditor.
Okay.
Yeah, you can do both, but typically you're covering so much in an audit that you don't really dive into some of the, this is very specific procedures. And agreed upon procedures work is specifically designed to say, tell me exactly what you're trying to get at here, tell me exactly the procedures you want me to perform, and then I go off, we go off and we do it independently, which is very different from an audit, which has a defined set of rules around how you're supposed to perform an audit, what kind of testing you're supposed to do. So we haven't done a ton of agreed upon procedures for city governments before, but we have done the audit work before. And I, again, I go back to, I don't, I don't think you're outside of any norm with other cities. I really think it comes back to, it's the conversion. Cities don't typically go through large system conversions all that often, it's very expensive.
Very expensive.
So in my experience, it's when things change in a large scale is when you experience problems. And I think that's probably what happened here because those conversions are hard. You went from a system that wasn't tracking by project to a system that was tracking by project and connecting all those dots is a challenging step and it, and it takes time.
And everyone's in agreement, finance and management, that this is the right procedure then, we're not over, we're not overthinking it and we're not overlooking something that's prevalent in other small communities or other cities.
Right, exactly.
Some, some cities are coming up, you know, that don't know where the money went and that's a tough thing to tell your voters, we just don't know where it is.
I think that's a fair statement and I think this gives you some, some assurance to go back to people who are asking questions around these private projects and say, here's what we did in response to that and here's what the outcome was.
Thank you very much. Done? Council member King?
Well, I just had one question, maybe it's for Chanel about this.
Page number?
Page 63. And you guys probably did this audit. And it, and it just kind of stuck out here, it's an expense for MNS, MNS Engineering on 7/22/15 for $18,675 and Fundware was not recorded in Tyler, since been, since been recorded to project. Was that, was that just because it didn't go into Tyler or, because maybe I need to sit down with you and look at this Tyler program because, because the way I understand this Tyler program works is you should just be able to look up anything and see where everything went, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So why was that pushed back to that product, that number 9,000?
That, that overlapped our conversion. We converted as of August 34th, 1st of 15th, and the last transaction in Fundware, which was our legacy system, was as of 7/22/15, which just happened to be this invoice. So it looks like when we carried it over into Tyler, it never made it through. And it wasn't until we did this agreed upon procedures that we found it.
So it's in there now?
It's in there now.
Okay. That's where my confusion was.
Yeah, we did, when we, when we found that, we did look at all of the transactions on that specific date and tied them back into Tyler to make sure that, because there was a, there was sort of a funky thing that happened with that date.
Hmm.
But those were all, we checked through all those.
So now you can go back and all those are in there? You could go back to.
Yeah, I think the only thing that's outstanding and Chanel probably has an answer already before me was the, I think it was like $990.
Yeah, the $990 is now variance of zero as of this week, so I made the changes, so now it agrees to what the Fundware balance was as of 8/31/15.
Okay, that's all I have.
Excellent. Anything else?
There's the, around at that time?
Well, I, I, Mr. Dosa, I truly, truly appreciate the work you put into this. It was very thorough and you coming down tonight to answer those questions that we just needed to hear.
Sure, no, my pleasure and I apologize for being, I'm glad you're able to stretch.
It was the only agenda item, so it.
Is it?
Boom, yeah.
Try using the 246 right now. It's boring.
Sure.
All righty. If there's nothing else.
That's it.
Thank you very much, Erica, for hanging in on the phone. I am adjourning this meeting until our next meeting, Thursday, July 27 at 6:00 PM. Come with sleeping bags, be ready for a long night.
Thanks, Erica.
And thank you all.